We will call a meeting to order and we will have the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. May you all stand and we will have a prayer. Laura Hens, dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day and for the freedoms we enjoy in our great nation. We pray for the man and woman in uniform, both past and present, who have provided us these freedoms. We pray for guidance during tonight's council meeting. Help us all to use good judgment when making decisions for the community we serve. We pray for the sick, that they may be healed and comforted. We pray for those who have lost loved ones. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, in his role with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, going on, we'll have roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Fox.
Here.
Hayer.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Sokraski.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Beverly.
Okay, in front, you've probably all read the September 21st council minutes. Does anyone need to speak to any corrections or changes, or do we have a motion to approve them?
I mostly approve.
It's written.
Second.
Ron Jones makes a motion to approve. The minutes is written. Mark Hayer, second. Roll call, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Hayer.
Yes.
Sokraski.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Beverly.
Okay, going off approval, bills. Bills list is in front of you. Does anyone wish to speak to anything in the bills list?
The end or is that it's some partial payment, right?
Yeah, three second pay request.
I've been there far along.
Yeah, or what they're submitting. They did.
I've been out there a lot.
I was off today, I didn't want to.
So far, so good. I just drove by, but I haven't stopped.
Yeah, it's clear as an honest.
Okay.
How many pay the bills?
We have a motion to pay the bills by Nick Sokraski.
Second.
Mike Bar, second. Roll call, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Hayer.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Sokraski.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Okay, and your package have a notice on a public hearing for a lot split. Did you want to say anything about that camp, or just let it go reading?
I really don't know that much about it personally. I had a rough idea of it.
Okay. What's in your packet? Would you like to read that? Any questions on that? Going on, planning commission, come from the planning commission, but from committee reports. You do have a little recommendation on insurance option, which I'll let the committee speak to, but we have several committees that are going to speak at this time, from insurance, to water, to personnel. Who wants to be first?
Thank you, Mayor. I can go first. Insurance committee, insurance committee met tonight. BORMA group who covers our health insurance. Of course, they have some increases coming on board and they gave us two different options. Diane had asked some village employees what would work best for them. Got some response back and then the committee took a look at the two different options tonight. But committee's recommending that we go with option 4A, which basically is a mapped benefit. Deductibles go up, but their increase in their premiums only go up point a half a percent. So that's what we're recommending that council approves. And I think a lot of the employees thought that was best for them. A majority of the employees thought that was best for them, so.
And the other option went up three and a half percent.
Correct.
Yeah.
To keep the deductible the same, so yeah. So that's what committee's offering for health insurance.
Okay.
Are you going to vote on them?
Yeah. Want to bring out your form of motion?
A motion that we accept BORMA's increase on the 4A option, which is a half a percent increase. The deductibles would be 1,250 for individual, 2,500 for family.
Okay. Mike Bar has put a motion on the floor to accept BORMA's increase of 0.5 percent, which the majority of employees have been in favor of. So we'll need a second to that.
A second, but do you need to answer quicker, or can it go the ordinary course?
Well, we're not doing a reading on.
Right, we're just doing a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Mark Hayer, seconds. Roll call, please.
Hart.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Sokraski.
Yes.
Bar.
Yes.
Hayer.
Yes.
Jones.
Okay. Next, who would like to speak? Each committee?
The personnel committee met to discuss the topic of raises for village personnel in the upcoming year. And the three of us unanimously agreed to incorporate a 3 percent pay increase across the board for all employees, part-time and full-time, or seasonal. And I'd like to see a vote on that, too, so we can kind of get that on the board a little bit.
I'd be the first to the air.
Yes. And I, speaking for the committee, would recommend we give a 3 percent pay raise to employees this year.
I'll second that motion.
This year or starting next year?
2016.
We have a motion by Nick Sokraski from the committee.
When was the last raise?
About last year.
1 percent, insurance went up.
Close to 5 percent.
Three years ago, I think.
Yeah, significantly.
Many years ago.
We did a mid-year.
Yeah, you did a mid-year.
Mid-year.
Twenty thirteen, I believe.
No.
No, twenty four.
It was in the middle of the year, like July.
Yeah.
Last year.
Maybe three.
Last year.
I think it was last year.
It was last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, in 2014.
Twenty sixteen.
At July.
That I don't remember. I think it was mid.
1 percent. Okay. Okay, any more discussion?
No.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to increase the employees of the village of Hickstone, I believe if I understood correctly, sitting in on the meeting, part-time, full-time, correct? All employees. 3 percent increase as effective 1 January 2016. Give me a second, please. Ron Jones, second. Roll call, please.
Bar.
Yes.
Sokraski.
Yes.
Hayer.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Hart.
Let's stand.
Okay, voting carries. We have another committee report, I believe.
Water sewer. Yep. Water sewer committee met this week also and we've been for the past couple of months looking at our rates overall with our base, water rates, of course. We've talked about an increase, I mentioned that the last time, with water, but you know, we've got some big projects coming up and everything. We've created a nice revenue bank, to a degree, for these projects coming up. Of course, no ground has been broken yet, working with EPA and everything else, but so we've been spending money with engineers and different things for the past couple of years for this project. But the $35 base fee, you know, I know was hard on people and everything, and then we were looking at our revenues, what we have at the current time, like I said, but we were looking at lowering our base fee to $15 per month, which would still create a revenue for those long-term control projects, but also looking at, right now, we are getting the first thousand gallons of water is included in that for free, but we're looking at increasing the per-month bill $3.12, taking away that free thousand gallons of water. So it'd go up $3.12, of course, but then also looking at lowering the base rate to $15 instead of 35.
Now, the revenue that we have generated so far for these future projects, that certainly isn't going to be enough for all the projects.
No.
They're gone in a heartbeat.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We could change it, for now?
Well, I know it's helped out. It's put some money in the bank for these projects. I just, I just.
Absolutely.
We're going to get loans as it is, I would guess.
Right, most definitely.
And I mean, we already had a huge loan for the sewer treatment plant.
I don't know if that's necessarily true. I mean, I think a lot of these rates were passed when we thought the projects were going to happen a lot sooner than they've happened. And you've gotten an additional four or five years of payoff on that sewer loan, which when these items were originally figured and the rates were originally adjusted to where they are, I think it was anticipated that we were going to be paying for both of these things at the same time for a longer period of time than obviously now we will have to.
But my point is, it still isn't going to be enough money.
Well, that may or may not be true, because even at this rate, it still generates an extra $200,000 to $300,000 a year, which goes into that bank that is sufficiently.
And if we continue not to do anything?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if initial phase, initial phase one, this could still take care of 90 to 100 percent of it out of pocket.
I just wanted to get a little clarity on that.
The biggest problem is, in my opinion, is reducing, and then we start doing these projects and we jack it back up. I don't know about the rest of you around this table, but I had a lot of phone calls and every time I went uptown for something, somebody wanted to share with me about their bill. And we're there. People have acclimated themselves to this. We know, hopefully, 2016, we're going to need a pile of money to start these projects. Leave it alone. I mean, you're going to give up from what you're bringing in now, that's $630,000 a year, you're going to give up $360,000. Just like, and I don't see with the work we have coming up, where we can take $360,000 and just say, ah, don't need it.
I think the issue for me comes down to the point, the people of this community have paid this money. This isn't our money.
Correct.
And if we're not using it right now, why shouldn't they get the relief from the rate that's being charged that's not needed right now? I think if you went out and asked the average citizen, would you rather keep your money now to be able to spend the way you want, knowing that we may have to increase this in the future? Can I keep my money now and maybe it won't get raised in the future? I think they would all say, yes, I would like the reduction now. That only makes sense to me.
Their savings, I mean, you know, per month, figure it yourself.
Seventeen dollars.
And like I say, people have adjusted, and all the bills are keeping pretty well paid. They've adjusted to the increase. Now you take it away and you're going to go through everything all over again. Hopefully, you're going to do it next year, when we start breaking.
Well, we discussed that, too, and maybe the way to do it in the future was to adjust it based on usage cost versus this base rate stuff. And I think that has a lot of people annoyed. I mean, we had the discussion where somebody uses 2,600 gallons and then they use 7,000 gallons and their bill's not much different. I mean, the way we've got it billed, conservation doesn't help you.
Well, I think, thinking back to those days, Mark, I think the billing was determined based on the infrastructure needs and what new lines and new taps and all the things that go with not just getting the water into your house, but all the things that get the water there. So that was one of the things we used to make calculations years ago.
And I'm not criticizing that. I'm just saying I don't know if those needs are necessarily there now to what they were then.
And had I known that we had this much money in, per se, escrow or whatever, I would wish to cancel a couple of those water mains that are a little bit trashy out there. But.
Water means we have.
You mean water.
Sewers.
Sewers. We've got sewers that are 80 years old out there. The only thing holding them together is just the dirt around them, because there's not much tile left. But, I mean, y'all do what you want, but I'm telling you, hopefully, hopefully, we start turning some dirt the first of the year and this, this money that is in this account now is gone, just like that.
I agree.
But if we can give people relief for a year, two, three, you know, I think they'll appreciate that.
Will you?
And I'm all for giving people a break, but I can't see giving them the break and then putting it right back on them.
What's the timeline from the EPA? Like, how much time do we have to start getting?
I can address it. I've talked to Adam, you know, I said, are they signing off, you know, and they give me the runaround. He said, it's basically done. They just need a couple of numbers, of course, back from Adam, and it's a done deal. They just have not signed off on it. That's what he's giving me, that's what Andrew gave me from Ohio EPA.
Okay, but my question is, what kind of time we have to accomplish this project?
As far as I know, every year that we've spent talking about it, we've burned that year. Gone. We lost it. So when this happens and it starts, and it starts going and dirt starts getting turned, there's no stopping. You know, we talked about, eh, you do it in 20 years and you get this much done, you get that much done. We're going to be non-stop on this thing. I mean, every year, there's going to be a project going.
Major, major.
Major project, and it's going to take major money.
The first five-year phase is going to be around $5 million.
$5 million is what they put on paper. Now, you have went through the bidding process enough times to know that if it's $5 million on paper, by the time we get the project done, we're probably going to be seven, eight or so.
Probably last year's money.
Yeah. I mean, like I say, do what you want, but I think we're going to an injustice. Giving people back money is an injustice, because we're going to take it and put it right back on them again.
Even more, maybe.
So we don't, we don't have a crystal ball.
I know we don't.
My side of it.
Some of these projects could go less, you know, for less than what. Eliminate CSO, would you know?
I do have a motion on the floor.
I think we're still discussing.
Still discussing. And if you're going to lower it, that's something that's in ordinance form, I guess you could take a vote to see where everybody stands, but we'll still have to bring back.
Right.
Well, I would make the motion that, to adopt the recommendations of the committee.
Mark Hayer has made a motion to adopt the resolutions of the committee concerning the decrease in the water.
Increase in the water bill, decrease in the sewer base.
Decrease in the water bill, decrease in the sewer base. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'm torn. I've been working.
Okay, you have a motion, right? Yeah, I'll second. Ron Jones, second. Roll call, please.
Hart.
No.
Beverly.
No.
Sokraski.
You know, having been a part of the team that was the architect of the original thing, I'm really torn myself, but I also understand what the plan is. Any turn of dirt?
We're good.
I've heard that for years. I'm going to vote in favor of this, knowing that we may have to go back the other way.
No.
Hayer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
So I get your break of time? Right? It's 3-3, right?
Yeah, it was a little big.
That's right. I will be in favor of the committee's recommendation, as the motion was made. Thank you all for all the discussion.
I guess the only, the only thing on that for Troy going corporate, when would you?
An effective date.
And then also so it's gone and started, you know.
You have to get the ordinance back.
Well, yeah, with Troy.
You assume the rules is then.
Do you want to pass this on?
Is there an emergency?
You guys had discussion about that?
Can I suspend the rules?
Can we suspend the rules?
It came when I bring the ordinance back.
Okay.
You can always suspend the rules, it's a question of, suspend the rules just suspends the formalities of the three readings. You still have to wait the 30 days after you pass it. If it's truly an emergency and you pass it as an emergency, then that acts as the 30-day waiting period, besides the readings.
Okay.
All right. It's probably not justifiable under the emergency clause, but it certainly could suspend the rules. Probably was when we increased it. And I don't know if, I think we did three readings. I'm just teasing.
I'm sure we did three readings.
I'm sure. Do you know, I have a public comment.
You know where I'm going.
So we would vote suspend the rules if we said, the third reading, we would vote again.
If you vote to suspend the rules, we do all the three readings at the same time and vote on it, assuming that it gets passed.
That would change.
Right, I mean, and one of you sitting here could change your mind by that. I mean, it's only two weeks, but.
Okay, all right. I think the people here are still really happy. Going on with the administrator's report. You want to bring, take some probation?
Basically, Ethan Austin will finish with probation, since there is no decrease in payments and change as far as their status, technically off probation. In your packet, there is a certificate I put in there. Every year, the sewer department has to go through some special testing. This time around, we got 100 percent, so I guess I'll be, I'll fill you that. I mean, they've always passed, so it's not like this is the first time. They've been doing this for years, but it's the first time we've gotten, you know.
Ken, do you need an answer on the two employees for probation?
Well, if you made the recommendation, you want me to make the recommendation to council and we take them off probation?
Well, yeah, I guess.
Well, before we do that, what do you think?
I think you've done pretty good.
Are they required to have a CDL?
Austin's still looking on his, Ethan has.
Is that part of the job description?
Yes, I want him to get one before.
Then, then I would not advance him until he does it.
Well, he's not getting advanced, he's just off probation. They're not moving up the grade here. They're staying grade two.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do anything until he fulfills his obligation.
Can he, can we lengthen probation? Is it going to be an ability to do that? Could that satisfy, Ron, as you're suggesting? I agree with you.
It is fine. I mean, I've been talking to him. So no, I, that's.
Good, don't talk much.
So Ethan.
No, it's quite simple to get. That's why I don't know, how long's it been that he hasn't got it?
There are some reasons.
So Ethan Hathaway is somebody who's already fulfilled all the obligations?
Yeah, Ethan has, his, Austin does not.
Are you recommending he be taken off probation?
Yeah, I guess I do. Ethan Hathaway.
Okay, I'll make the recommendation. We take Ethan Hathaway off probation. Need a motion?
I accept what the mayor says. I'd make the motion for that.
Sokraski makes the motion. Sorry. Mike Bar, seconds. Roll call, please.
Hayer.
Yes.
Bar.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
You're just taking the one guy off, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Sokraski.
Yes. I would also recommend that, and I'm not sure how these things go, I don't think in my time here, we've never done it before, but I would like to extend the probation of Austin for a period. I'm open to suggesting for how long.
Pending license.
You can leave it open how long, what if we?
Well, you said it's pretty easy to get it.
Yeah, it's not going to be months, but if you want to word it that way, that's fine, I'm okay.
Give him 30 days.
Yeah, we better give him a deadline.
Yeah, give him 30 days.
So I'd make him.
What's Ken's recommendation? How long do you think?
I think you should go get it in a month.
All right, then that's what we're going. While you were talking, I thought there may be some other considerations.
Do you have any other drivers that don't have a CDL?
Just Ron at the sewer plant.
And Steve.
Steve's got one, I'm pretty sure. I thought you brought his from Pennsylvania.
And he drives the back truck.
Yeah, I'll just kind of. But I'll double check.
Just in town is the same as any going out on an interstate. We've got to look at our liability with these guys driving these trucks with no CDL. They bump into somebody and having no CDL and they're sitting in that truck, it's the same thing as having no driver's license.
I'm going to give his if you got him.
Okay, Mick's got the motion on the floor for 30-day extension of Austin Zeta's probation with the pretense that he gets his CDL license within that timeframe. Does that make sense?
I'll second it.
Ken Hart, second. Roll call, please.
Hart.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Sokraski.
Yes.
Bar.
Yes.
Okay, this time we'll turn the meeting over to our secretary, Troy Essex.
First thing I have is ordinance 2015-11, second reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
Can I put on the table today just an updated version as of today? It won't change, but then I'll buy the next reading, I'm sure.
The second thing, actually, and I have misnumbered, should be ordinance 2015-12. I had an 11 on that, that was accounting for Diane, so 2015-12. First reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sell Lot 6 in the Hickstone Industrial Park to the Defiance County Community Improvement Corporation. This is how we proceed when we sell one of those lots out there. We use the CIC as a transfer agent, which allows us to do it without putting it out for public bid.
I don't have that.
And I think that was what was passed out around the.
I'm sure we talked about, what, what will be a agenda?
No. And this is.
Waiting on the CIC.
Yeah. And this is ultimately, this is the first step, the CIC will have to pass a resolution, and this is the lot for Veterans LP, right next to their existing.
This first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
And then next is resolution 2015-21, which is a first reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to the indigent persons for the calendar year 2016. We passed the same thing basically last year around this time. This is what allows when there's indigent people that are arrested for crimes in the village and they get court-appointed counsel, this is what allows the county to apply to the state public defender's office for reimbursement for those items, and then they pass whatever portion of that back onto the village. So this has to be passed before the end of the year in order to authorize that.
Should we suspend? Did we suspend rules on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's not an emergency, but, okay. And then, next is, uh, resolution 2015 dash 22, first reading by caption only, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to enter into agreements with eligibility tracking calculators LLC as a benefit of the village's participation in the Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Association benefits pool. This is basically, they sent some agreements that they want Diane to sign as the representative. One of our benefits of belonging to BORMA is they partnered with this company who basically analyzes payroll information to help determine whether or not employees are eligible for Obamacare. I mean, that's basically what it is, there's certain requirements, and so that's a benefit of our belonging to BORMA, but each member entity has to individually enter into, um, agreements which authorizes, one is a confidentiality type agreement where if there's, uh, public health information or, or that type of information, that, that's gotta be kept confidential, and the other basically authorizes them to analyze the data that we provide them and provide consulting services, and that's all part of the benefit of belonging to BORMA, correct, Diane?
Yeah, it's a benefit.
It's just they have to individually, each village, county, whoever belongs to BORMA, has to individually authorize it and enter into the agreements with them, but that's at no cost to the village, that's all part of the BORMA, well, I mean, it's part of the BORMA equation, so.
And they do need this, that's very well.
Was it as an emergency? You can do it to suspend the rules, I mean, it didn't bring it as an emergency, but you can do it, you can always do it to suspend the rules.
Is that your recommendation, we suspend the rules? Ron Jones makes a motion to suspend the rules, per Troy Essex's recommendation. Mark Haver, seconds, roll call, please.
Hart?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yes.
Haver?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lecraske?
Yes.
It's gonna be second and third reading of resolution 2015 dash 22 by caption only, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to enter into agreements with eligibility tracking calculators LLC as a benefit of the village's participation in the Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Association benefits pool.
So, Mike Barf makes the motion. Troy Essex's recommendation. Lecraske, second, roll call, please.
Hart?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Lecraske?
Yes.
Then, uh, the media com lease agreement Kent has in his possession, finally, we reviewed it, got the right figures and dates and everything in it, and other than that, it's basically the same agreement that we've been entering into, so we've already authorized that before, when we authorized the pay increase and stuff, so it just needs sent, or signed and sent back, and, uh, hopefully then that's put to bed. Um, the easements on the sewer project, I have the paper versions of easement done, the issue on them is the legal description. When it was first proposed by Adam and talking with Kent and myself, um, the attempt was gonna be, and anybody that's been involved in one of these, to describe them in a way where we didn't need to have a surveyed legal description. In other words, we try and say, if it was a 30-foot easement, we try and say, you know, 15 feet off the south end of the one lot, 15 feet off the north end of the lot below it, and that would be the 30 feet. And then, as I got into it more and Adam sent along the drawing and the easement comes in, there's two problems with that on, it does run between two of the lots, um, lot 42 and lot 43 in Hatteras Edition. The only problem is on lot 42, a little sliver off the bottom was deeded to the owner of lot 43, so that puts it in a position where we can't estimate how many feet on each lot or, or, in order to do it that way, so we need, and, and I tried to call him this afternoon and, and couldn't get through to him, but I'm hoping Kent says that Adam's guys have done all the surveying and, and put, maybe we gotta come back and get a couple of measurements, but that they'll be able to give us a specific description for all the areas. The other problem is on the, on the lot that the Baptist church sits on, it's a big lot that goes all the way to the north behind it, um, the easement goes right through the middle of it, so without having some other points in there, we can't really say the east, you know, the northernmost or the southernmost, I mean, you just can't do it without having a survey description, which quite frankly is more ideal anyway, so that there's no question about it, but if we could've done it the other way, we certainly could've. So once that's done, I just need to plug that into what I have on my computer, and then we gotta get some people's signatures. That's where that's at.
Okay. Anything else? We'll continue on then, uh, police? Okay. New officers are working out well, looks like.
Yeah, one has started and the other one's still waiting.
Right, and then?
He's gonna be back tomorrow morning.
And then we'll square him in?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's what?
Stress test for police and fire, physical. The other one didn't move to that, police and fire, he's still fine. Okay, on EMS, we discussed, uh, some things in the personnel meeting that Troy Essex
is going to square up with your EMS. I think the confusion comes about, we have, since they have two full-time, how do you disseminate run pay, dollar an hour? In conjunction with this new ordinance with pay increase, Troy, we spoke in the law, so he's gonna put that together the way he needs to be. All right.
I have another thing for EMS.
All right.
Uh, Jason Zerman runs for us.
Correct.
He has acquired paramedic status, licensing and everything, we'd like a pay increase for paramedic.
Good for him.
Well, I would recommend that we would, uh, entertain that, and, uh, since he's been
promoted and he's a paramedic status, we would increase his, uh, run pay to $15.97 an hour. Do we have a recommendation or a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you, I thought Cheryl said that, and I'm just asking. Can we bill for having a paramedic on the rescue squad to get the selection so we could?
I think if they do the paramedic skill.
Only if they use paramedics.
All right. Any more clarification?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Mark Haver makes the motion. Second. Mike Barf, seconds. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Haver?
Upstee.
Beverly?
Yes.
Lecraske?
Yes.
Okay, that's a grand achievement. So, we'll turn the floor to you, Diane, and let you handle the clerk treasurer's report.
We have a month to date in your, today, cash report and income tax report in your packet, and thank you very much to Cheryl Smith for trying to keep up with it and taxes. Um, I would.
Thank her for, thank her for us too. We know how busy she is back there doing all the jobs.
Yeah, she's working quite a few hours. I would ask that, um, you hire Kim Forrester as the new taxes administrator. Um, any good you wanna spring in the physical, she's had a background check and stuff like that.
I, uh, first and I did sit in on all the interviews and, uh, a little bit support with that and something.
And, uh, I would recommend, per Diane's recommendation and the people that sat in on the interviews, that we hire Kim Forrester as the new, um, tax administrator. Roll, I need a second.
You need it first.
Need a motion? We'll get there.
I made it.
Mark Haver makes a motion. Ron Jones, second, publicly united, orange bill. Roll call, please.
Hart?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
On your recommendation, yes.
Haver?
Yes.
Lecraske?
Yes.
Okay, well, well, everyone can welcome Kim Forrester as the new tax administrator.
Oh, so we, we have a, yeah, it's her, it's her time.
And so she get passes?
Yeah, since she passes her direct to being a physical, but also, um, she needed to give her employee two weeks, so she's currently at the by itself. Um, services, I believe.
Um, no, um, she's at, um, I don't know, need second street to, child, unfortunate.
Child.
All right.
So then, um, all of the projects have turned in their 2016 proposed budgets, so I think we are ready for the finance committee to start every new process and, and.
Can you give that to each committee member?
Yep.
Money available, what they spent, I hope it always does, that helps.
That's all, okay. Uh, so, I will do that, I'll pass out the information to the finance committee, they can set up a meeting. And then, Troy, when you get done the income tax ordinance changes, is there a committee that can review those, or will that just be all the councilmen on their own reviewing it, or how?
I was, I guess it's, the changes are all in ordinance form, so, I mean, I don't have any problem getting it to, you know, because it'd be the first meeting in November, last meeting October, and, so I gotta, got probably an hour's worth of work outs to get it done. Um, or we could disseminate the materials that are, I mean, that have already been supplied to me in advance for people to look at, so that they got some idea of what's coming and, and basically, when it's coming, it's gonna look real similar to the materials that.
Do we need to rewrite the rules and regulations also? Or will we?
I think that's part of the information that's in there, that I have to check.
Will there be any way to, like, break out what's in there and make mold what's in there, or?
The, I mean, only if you're going off of the materials that were sent, because, I mean, if I had, I think it's, what I'm doing is gonna be in, like, Word format, but the old ordinance isn't, if so, you could do, kinda wanna, you could do like on Microsoft Word, where you compare like two documents to see what's different, and it gives you like a third document with all the stuff that read.
But you're really kinda starting all over, aren't you, with their format?
I'm starting with their format, I mean, they got it in Word, and there's several places where we have to look at our old rules and see how we've been doing it, make some elections, so basically, I just had a hard copy of theirs and went down through, you know, page by, I mean, I had to page a bunch, um, pages, and then through their documents that you provided to me, then my secretary, as I got done with the section, I would give them to her and she would mark, you know, or she would type up and, uh, make the selections and then save it, so that's.
All right, thanks, I'm done.
Okay, great. Okay, mayor's report, um, a couple things, we had a lot of conversation on this, and I believe, uh, we are now correct. Uh, trick-or-treat night is October 31st, correct? Five to seven. Okay, so everybody can put their costumes on and go trick-or-treat. Um, the other thing is.
Will the fire department have anything that night?
Fire department has their own.
Okay.
That's all set.
Same night?
Same night. So, everything is all set, I think, one of the churches in the area is having a trick-or-treat trunk, you know, where they come to their parking lot, and then the kids just go through. Um, we're gonna have, uh, staff member Congressman Robert Latta in the council chambers Wednesday, October 7th, 2:30 to 4:00. So you might wanna put that in the paper. And then, uh, we have an announcement for a, um, Christmas cruise through Purse Bingo, October 17th, Defiance County Fairgrounds, multi-purse, multipurpose building. Okay? And with that, a big thank you out to all the village employees and departments for their continued efforts in taking care of our village. Um, and a thank you too to, I noticed a big, why about a change in cleanup around the community? I'm not against stopping and picking up trash, and I think everybody in this room, everybody that's listening can set an example and just, if you see a can, you see a paper, you never know what company's gonna be driving through Hicksville to relocate, and what the first impression it makes if everything is in order. So, with that, uh, the only other thing, Troy, on the pay increase and the ordinance with the police and fire, that was recommended by Diane too, so we get some clarification.
Okay, all right.
And the other thing on the budget, uh, you'll see some things as far as nuisance, how you consider it, I, I looked around Hicksville, and we have several situations where if we had budgeted some monies, maybe we could purchase a piece of property, tear it down, resell it, let somebody build it. So that's all I have. Welcome everybody, and thank you for attending, and, uh, God bless America.
I have a question.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
No.
But you got.
Kent, as I was renewing all my auction license and appraisals and all that stuff, I was thinking about our sewer plant. Have we got somebody licensed to take care of that place if something happens to Ron?
Bob and Steve are going November 6th for the chest again.
They're taking it?
This'll be the second time.
Second.
Jimmy, he's going down the day before to take the water, or flip-flop, one or the other, you're finding out two separate days. This'll be his first time for the water.
Good for them. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to introduce Rebecca Holly, she's already had the new, uh, staff writer at Tribune, Jared's taken backseat, and she's got, uh, more teaching responsibilities there at the school, so.
All right. Anything else? That will indicate a motion to adjourn.
Got it.
Everyone wants to stay? Mark Haver makes a motion.
Uh, streetlight crowd, they have a meeting, maybe look out, and this meeting has been on the boards since 30.
Yep, sorry, 7:30. But that's okay. Sure, you're plenty of time, this is fair. Okay, Mark made the motion to adjourn, second. Yeah, Ron Jones, second, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Haver?
Never mind. Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Lecraske?
Yes.